On Saturday, January 21st, Gallery Beauty Supply opened the doors on North Line, near Sam's Club. The event attracted numerous customers, friends, and family members. Council President Zoe Cuspa, DDA Director Kaylee Landrell, and City Administrator Dan Marsh joined me in welcoming this new business to our community. Sisters Amani and Ashley Covington own the shop and are very enthusiastic young entrepreneurs. One is a cosmetologist and the other sold beauty products online during her college years. Since they could not find the products that they needed locally, they decided to open a business that would provide those products and chose Southgate for its central location. We wish them continued success and thank them for their investment in Southgate. Yesterday afternoon, I had the honor of presenting my 2023 state-of-the-art, or state-of-the-art too, yes, state-of-the-city address to the crowd of residents, employees, business owners, and community leaders. I'd like to thank the Southgate Rotary Club for hosting the event and Crystal Gardens for doing such a wonderful job, serving over 165 people who attended. As always, Ed Zelenek was a masterful master of ceremonies. Thank you, Ed. Our city council president also presented our business awards, and this year's winners are: State 26 Grill for Community Engagement, ITZY BITZY for New Business of the Year, Mexican Gardens for Longevity Award, Fudgies for Community Engagement, and the Hungarian Rhapsody for the People's Choice Award, which was an online voting for residents to participate in. I'd also like to thank Christine Steves for her beautiful rendition of our National Anthem, and the Southgate Anderson Jr. ROTC for starting things out with the presentation of colors. As I said during my address, 2022 was another productive year for our city, and I remain in awe of the people I serve with, our employees, citizen volunteers, and fellow elected officials. But this year is also looking to be another banner year for our community. The entire state-of-the-city event is available online at the city website for anyone who was not able to make the luncheon. The lobby of our municipal building, as well as the council chambers here, once again adorned with hundreds of beautifully decorated hearts celebrating Valentine's Day. This artwork was created by our elementary students at Fordline, Grogan, Allen, and Shelters Elementary. Special thanks to art teachers Greg Luna and Lynn Costas for coordinating this effort. My Hearts in Southgate display can be viewed through the end of the month. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
Good evening. Just a reminder that your winter tax bills are due February 14th with no penalty, and then if you cannot pay them by the 14th, it's encouraged to pay them by the 28th. After the 28th, they go to the county, and then they have to be paid to the county after that time. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ralph?
No report.
Councilman Graziani?
Nothing, ma'am.
Okay. The school board met. They recognized the Anderson High School band and color guard for an amazing season. Also, it was school board recognition month, so the students at the IB program at North Point gave all of the board members flowers they made out of paper in their Spanish class. So that was a good aspect bringing to the board, and we appreciate all of our board members, too. Councilman Farah?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd just like to take this opportunity to announce my resignation from the city council effective February 28th this year. My wife and I have decided to downsize. We're going to be moving outside of the city. I will serve through the rest of this month. I will be available for anybody's needs, but I have submitted a formal resignation letter to the clerk, so the 28th of this month will be my last day. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your years of service.
Literally than ever.
Timely.
When the police catch up, let me know.
Councilman George?
Please.
Thank you. Greetings and storytimes are ongoing at the library. This Saturday, February 4th, is Take Your Child to the Library. We have two special events for that day: a silly songs dance party from 11:00 a.m. till noon, and a Valentine extravaganza from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. Come in and make a Valentine for your loved one. Everything will be provided. The Teen Advisory Board is meeting tonight to make up for the weather-cancelled one the previous week. The Stuffed Animals Sleepover was a huge success. Twenty animals had a great time. The children were given a memory book with pictures showcasing all that took place during the sleepover. The children's librarian plans on making this an annual event. Oh, I lost my other notes. I wanted to thank our first responders and our DPW. After the big snow, my street was shoveled before my walk was even shoveled. They're doing a good job, plus I know they've got a lot of other work. It's been extremely cold. Also, over the weekend, I noticed the emergency vehicle out several times. Once at the church, another time coming into my subdivision, and then from watching the news with a couple of other events that happened in the city. It was a very busy weekend for them. Extremely proud of them, the way they conduct themselves, and everything is done in a timely manner. The mayor announced yesterday at the state-of-the-city that our fire department response is like four minutes, which is half of the national average. I'm so proud to live in the city, to be a part of it, and to know that we have so many good employees that respond when there is a need. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Colovas?
Thank you. I'm still getting over this. Z-Pak didn't take care of it, but they got some other antibiotics, so who knows? Anyway, but it's not contagious. That's the important thing, right? Right. I did receive notice from Councilman Mark Farah, and I believe I just walked in when you were discussing it, of your resignation. Now, it's not effective till 2/28/23, so we still have time to go to Circuit Court and get an injunction to prevent you from retiring. I can try. Right, right, right. Then I can use it for wallpaper, right? Anyway, well, congratulations in moving your next step in life, you and your family. It's absolutely wonderful. I think we're all a little envious that you're retiring, retiring, and enjoying your time with your family. So, we will miss you dearly.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And just a report on the Grecian Center is having a mother-and-son dance. Actually, it looks like a wedding invitation. I know everybody was looking around, wondering what's going on. Mother-and-son dance on 2/18/23. February 18th, there'll be a DJ, a photo booth, activities, games, face painting, and dinner from 5:00 to 8:00. Forty dollars per couple and ten dollars for each additional child. It's at the Grecian Center on Dixtealito Road, just prior to VFW Hall, 16300 Dixte. And you can purchase tickets on sale online, www.the-greciancenter.com. The-greciancenter.com, or you may call 734-282-5700. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Mr. Marsh, if you'd like to discuss the agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Under consideration of bids, we have only one agenda item, and that is the bid for purchase and delivery of trees. The administration recommends awarding the bid to Schlichtill's Nursery, Inc. of Springville, New York, for a one-year period. Schlichtill's was the lowest bidder. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, moving on to Communications A. The first item is a request for waiver of bid and to extend the current agreement with Flow Air Heating and Cooling Maintenance for a two-year period. Flow Air has agreed to hold current pricing for that two-year period. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, the second item is a request for waiver of bid and to extend the current contract with U.S. Lawns for ground maintenance and weed cutting for a two-year period. This two-year extension will maintain costs at the current rates. In your packet, you'll see that U.S. Lawns provided their bid on a template sheet, and it references lines in Kiwanis Park. I just wanted to note that we will not be using or charged for those services since those lines in Kiwanis Park are currently served by Davies. We intend to continue with that, and they're under contract currently. However, we do have that pricing. If there is an emergency, we could use U.S. Lawns for those parks. Are there any questions from council? The final item under Communications A is a memo regarding the proposed schedule for the 2023-2024 budget process. Are there any questions from council regarding those dates? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to ordinances, there's only one item under ordinances, and that's regarding ordinances 129813, 129817, and 307. Tonight will be the second reading for those proposed ordinance changes. The first reading took place at the October 19th council meeting, and after reviewing the minutes, we saw that the second reading had not taken place yet, so we've added it to tonight's agenda. The recommended changes specifically allow for the use of commercial industrial-rated wall panels with stone or brick design as dividing walls, and allows for exterior walls of non-residential buildings to be painted. The changes were reviewed and recommended by the planning commission. Additionally, we're recommending an increase to the fines associated with these two ordinances to help better regulate compliance. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. That is all.
Right before the racetrack, the horses take off. It gets real quiet.
False start.
Just so it's not a photo finish.
That's about all I know in photography.
It's now 7:00. The February 1st meeting will begin. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,